We are live, we've got Channel 79 also with us live. You all got the agenda that I had sent out to you. If you'll notice, I made a couple of references to some, just some cleanup work that we've got to do on our, some of our minutes, but so the first thing I want to do is just ask everyone if they reviewed the minutes of our last meeting on September 2nd, and if so, I'd love a motion to, this is September 2nd, yes, a motion to approve those minutes as presented, and then a second and all in favor. All right, BJ made the motion. Got a second is Amanda, and all in favor.
Aye.
All right, all good. Now, we're going back to some minutes of April, and I see what happened was that they still say "draft" on the, on the town website. And I, what happened was on the April ninth meeting, we were supposed to approve April 2nd minutes, but instead we approved the December 5th because we didn't change the date. So basically, I just need a motion to approve the meeting minutes of April 9th. I had a motion to do that. All right, I got Alan, a second of BJ, all in favor. Good, and then April, that was April 9th, and then April 2nd as well. I need a motion, Amanda, second Heather, all in favor.
Yeah.
Okay, good, that was easy stuff. So now, as you'll see, we've got some new faces joining us tonight. Actually, I see three. We've got Eric Feinstein with AutoCast, we've got Andrew Armstrong, who's going to talk to us about some exciting music that he's going to be bringing to New Canaan. We've got Abby Bangster, who's going to also be with Amanda talking about October for Design. So if we go in order of our agenda, we will start with Otto. And basically, Eric, he is going to tell us a little bit about what he's been doing with the Sculpture Trail and an app that he has that he's using in a lot of communities around the country. Just thought it was nice for us to hear this. I know that you all have said in the past that you like, if we can bring informational presentations to the meetings. So Eric, if you want to just talk to us about AutoCast and how it's been working and that kind of thing, that would be great.
Sure. Hopefully, you can all hear me. I am going to share, and I promise, a small, brief PowerPoint, but it just helps me remember, so hopefully you can all see that. And for those who do or don't know what it is.
So I'm head of the baseball league, and George is...
Is that you, Eric? That was you?
That was not me, no.
Oh, can I ask everyone to mute, please? All right, everyone mute.
Unless you have a question, in which case I'm muted. So I'll go, I'll go kind of quickly through this. So AutoCast is a mobile app that is being used around the country for getting people more engaged with what's around them. And the reason that it was developed was, was for this. And I live in Austin, and the first iteration of it actually was for a bicentennial that we had in Austin, where there was a juried sculpture exhibit. And I thought that, oh, that would be a great way to test my concept. And so I put together this audio guide whereby I interviewed the various artists and placed them on a map, and had some photos, and even engaged a local restaurant or two, and the T-Town Nature Preserve, to be sort of sponsors of it, and put it together. And then, once it proved successful, took it on the road. So that was in 2013, when we had the standalone Austin version. In 2014, I launched a platform version wherein one app can hold many, many different guides that sort themselves by proximity, with the idea being if you're in Stanford, you know, rather than having to look for a Stanford guide, and then you go off to New Canaan, you're looking for a New Canaan guide, if one guide has it all, like TripAdvisor or Yelp, it just guides you to what's closest. So that's what this conceit was about. The idea was, particularly for me, I never wanted to carry a guidebook. They're always heavy, they're expensive, and maybe you only want a page or two, but you buy the whole book. Similarly, the places you visit would love to have people engage more of their time, and presumably if they spend more time, then they're going to spend more money, so there definitely is a, an ROI on that type of thing. So what AutoCast is, is an audio guide that is hopefully voiced by people who know what they're talking about, voices of authority in any number of types of categories. The first one I did was art, as I mentioned, but the platform has done all these types of things that you see listed, festivals, and landmarks, and gardens, and what have you. It's really just any point of interest, use a generic term, that somebody is curious what is or was that about. Whether it's a store up in New Brunswick in Canada, we do a tour of their main street, and there's different shops. And if the shop is closed, there's a little sticker on the window that says, "We might be closed, but if you want to learn more about us, get the app." And you can hear the owner talking about it. They talk about what specials they might be having in that particular gallery and so forth. But as you can see, they're used for all these different categories. The general screens you're seeing are kind of what the app looks like, but I'll go through them. I'm actually going to hopefully get to a little demo of it, so you can see more and more. As I mentioned, they're location-aware. So if you were to open up the app in New York City, like on the right-hand side, you'd see New York City at the top, followed by other things in proximity, as opposed to if you go to Austin and open it there, you'll see Austin, then other Texas guides and so forth. It doesn't prohibit you, if you're in Austin, from seeing New York. It just, it's not necessarily the top of the list because presumably you would want to see what's closest to you. And there's lots of ways to find content besides that that I'll get to. So again, the app consists of any number of guides, and every guide consists of anywhere from one to as many points of interest or stops that you might want. One being the minimum, of course, and the most we currently have in any guide right now is, I think, 163, but there really doesn't, there's no particular reason. That's just how many they had. Every point of interest has five specific requirements, which, four of which are typically already known to people. So the name of it, as you can see on the bottom left, the Torpedo Factor Art Center, that's the name, or Illinois Landscape Number Five on the right, that's the name of the art piece. Text, what you see on the left is a little text page, it's sort of like a mini webpage, so we can have links back to an artist's website, or back to a calendar of events, if we're working with like a Chamber of Commerce or someone, or click to donate, click to join, vote for your favorite. We can embed a video there, instructional or educational or whatever in that regard. Photos, as you can see on the right, we can have as many as need be. You can see as you can scroll through those dots indicating you can scroll those images, but you have to have one because that one represents the thumbnail image that appears below all the content. And those images can be shared to Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, email, and so forth as well. The Get Here tab, which is not clicked in any of these, basically opens up Google Maps or Apple Maps, so someone can decide, oh, that actually is a really cool piece of sculpture, that Illinois Landscape, how do I get to there? And using the latitude longitude of that location, wherever someone is in the world, it'll tell them, here's how you get there. And then they can change it, because it's Google or Apple Maps, they can change it to bike directions, or walking, and voice turn-by-turn, whatever, whatever they need to do. And the last element is audio content. And as I mentioned, I like to have the audio come from someone who knows what they're talking about. In the case of art, like on the right-hand side, John Henry, John Henry is the one who provided the audio to me for that. So I work with artists, historians. We do a memorial park guide in Arizona, where all the audio was provided by a bunch of fifth graders because it was part of a project we did there. So it's great to hear all the different voices, and then they use it. We do STEM walks in Dallas. We're doing something at a, at an old 1800s farm in San Remo, California, so we get like the milk herder and the goat maker, or whatever they are, all talking about the different things. So it actually works out well. Besides having the main themed pieces of content, we can also include sponsors or advertisers, if someone wants to do that. On the left-hand side is an example of something from New Haven, where a different pushpin color is used for the Knights of Columbus Museum, which could be a sponsor, as opposed to the various art pieces. So we can intermix all kinds of pushpins and dots and categories, you know, on the same, in the same guide if we want to, or, or keep them separate. So it becomes flexible in, in that way. Pardon me. As I mentioned on the right, we could output things to social media for marketing purposes. I also alluded earlier, we can search for content, because right now, as we speak, if you were to download the app, which is free for Apple and Android users, there are 181 currently active guides. So since they sort by proximity, the first one you would see would be the New Canaan Sculpture Trail that we did with the, with the Land Trust. But you might want to see, let's say Dallas, and rather than scrolling and scrolling and scrolling and going, well, I'm not really quite sure how far away Dallas is, you could just type in Dallas there, or you could click on cities, and then you have an alphabetical listing to help find some things. Another way to help promote content that might be in it, or other things that might be happening in a town, or businesses, or events, every guide can be preceded by a splash page, and you can see the couple of things that were done here. On the left-hand side in Clayton, Missouri, they used it to promote an exhibit happening at their Heritage Center. On the right-hand side, something that we did in Chicago, they got to shout out their major platinum sponsor right on this, basically banner page that everyone is guaranteed to see before you enter the guide. And the only interaction is to click Continue, but at least, at least it's guaranteed to be seen. Other things that we've been doing to promote engagement is the term gamification, if people are familiar with it. And basically, this rewards people for visiting locations. This is a screenshot of some things we're doing in Indianapolis, where they have, as I mentioned, 150 or so sculptures. And to encourage people to keep on visiting, you get a virtual badge, or you can increment and earn virtual badges by visiting. So a sight seeker, as an example, you get by visiting effectively all of the pieces. And you can see my status on the left-hand side is I'm one-fourth of the way done. I'm at level one of four. If I tap it, it'll tell me, visit five more locations to earn level two. Now, the mystery one, on the bottom-left example, if you tap it, you don't know where you need to go, so you can just encourage that. When someone does complete a badge, they are automatically sent an email that comes from the host organization, that then gives them some further instructions. In the case of Indianapolis, the email says, oh, congratulations, you've done it. Reply to this email, and you'll be entered to win a prize. Pardon me. Again, I also wolfed down my dinner. In, in, in Kansas City, we're doing something similar, where to encourage visits to a bunch of coffee houses, there's 18 different cities in the Kansas City metro region, and if you visit any five of them, you earn a badge, and you automatically get an email that says, "Congratulations, you've done it." Reply to this with your full name and address, and we will mail you a coffee mug. So that's how they're working to try to encourage people to revisit stores and things like that. Another thing that we do to encourage visits, we call a passport, which, if you notice at the bottom, you can see some of these thumbnails underneath have a star, and we can pre-designate, "You must visit these locations." So the other option is, visit any five of the 10, we don't really care which. This one is, "You must visit these." And when you visit, that star fills in, so you'll know which ones you visited. And then similarly, when you're done, you can get a pop-up saying, "Congratulations, you've done it," and so forth. So lots of ways to try to encourage visits, whether they're to, you know, art pieces, businesses, art pieces and businesses, you know, it, it doesn't matter. In Clayton, Missouri, again, they did one where it was, "Visit these two parks, these two art pieces, and these two historic sites in order to win." And they gave away a tote bag or something like that. As I mentioned before, any number of different pushpin colors and different categories can exist on a map. And then if, if one does opt for that, we give the options to turn them off. So I have too many examples of Clayton, Missouri, but this is Clayton, Missouri, yet again, with art, historic sites, and parks. And you'll notice on the left, hopefully you can see on my cursor, I'm circling downtown Clayton, which is green because there's a park there. But on the right-hand side, I've toggled off park, so all the green dots go away, all the thumbnail images associated with that go away temporarily, just to make it a little bit easier to find. Because if, if you had all of them in Clayton, it's 62 locations, so that just makes it a little bit nicer. There's Google Analytics built-ins, we have metrics on all these types of things, so we can let people know, how is it going? We have additional metrics associated with the badges, so we can let you know how many people subscribed, how many people are at different levels, and so forth and so on. They kind of look like this when, when you're done. Pardon me one second. The dangers of Zoom. And then it's promoted in various ways, and, and you can see here, the top-left was something that we did in Greenwich for their Arts Council. They had some sculptures out front. In Boston, a couple of summers ago, we did a puzzle scavenger hunt, where we had site-specific puzzles that hopefully you can only solve if you went, like at the Old North Church, at the train station, and so forth. And then the top-right and the bottom-right are signs that were at sculptures at various places. And the bottom-left is a brochure that the Napa people put out for the biannual Napa Art Walk that we work with. I'm not going to play this video, I can always share this, but at this Vimeo location, the city of Columbia, Missouri, put out, put together a video talking about how the app works to explore and discover their public art. Just some quick stats, as I mentioned, I don't need to read all of them, but it's been in use, as I said, in its current iteration since 2014. Currently, 280 guides, but a lot of, we've done a lot more guides in, over time, because we'll do, for instance, the Stanford Summer Art Exhibit, and then that comes down into the summer, so we do it again. So I count that as one city, two guides. But we've done it five times, so. This is the general site of the US, and where we have guides as of two weeks ago, from the looks of it, because I'm missing a couple. But we are pretty heavily populated in this neck of the woods, because I'm here. But it's definitely spread out, which is nice. I don't always have to travel someplace, which makes it easier. I just got my first contract in Minneap, in Minnesota, in Bloomington today, so that's exciting. And then I mentioned San Remo, California, so we're going. And we also have done stuff, we have one guide in London, we did something in San Paolo and Berlin, and soon in, outside of Lucerne, doing an art guide for someone there. That one I did go to, because better than Bloomington. Work with all different kinds of organizations, as you can see, lots of logos and lots of text, it's the same kind of thing. And then last screen just has some complimentary statements, which, again, I'm not going to put up bad statements, so trust me that they're, that they're all good. But I can also say that nobody who's ever started to use us has ever stopped. So the first four customers we had when we launched in, in this version of the app in 2014 are still customers. Stanford actually is one of them, which is, has been a nice thing. What I was going to quickly do is switch over and share my phone screen, but I could take a moment to cough once more, and also ask if anybody had any questions in the meantime. And I realize I'm speaking very rapidly, trying to respect your time, but hopefully not putting on the fire hose too much.
No, thank you. You get a sip of water. So I met Eric last week when Beth Sanford and Nancy Bemis, who obviously you all know, invited out, invited me out to the Hannan Field, to, to the gallery there, the outdoor sculpture there. And I actually had downloaded the app, and I was fascinated by it, just because I, I could think of so many applications, everything from some of the events that the Chamber has run all these years, to so many more that we all are involved in. So I asked him, obviously, to come and join us tonight, and maybe, Eric, you can even share that PowerPoint with us for anybody that couldn't be, be with us. But I just wanted you all to have a chance to see it, and I thought it would be a good chance for anybody here to ask any questions, and all of your different organizations and roles and that kind of thing. Or if you want to play, you had something, Eric, you wanted to continue to show us?
Yeah, I'll quickly take you through the app, just so you can see it in action a little bit.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
When you are able to examine the users of the app, is there any way to identify, based on their location, whether you see most people who are residents of that town or business owners? Or do you tend to see the most traffic by people who are visiting a certain location, and are looking for an easy way to navigate and understand the landscape of a town?
Well, unfortunately, I don't know the answer to that, because it's anonymous. So all I can tell you is, this is how many, I'm going to go into the New Canaan Guide in the meantime. I can only tell you, this is how many people were accessing the New Canaan Guide, but I don't know who they are, because there's no, there's no tracking in that regard. So for me, it's a little bit difficult. But what I can tell you is, here's how many people were using it in New Canaan versus here's how many people were accessing the New Canaan Guide from Chicago.
Interesting. Okay, so as a follow-up to that, do you tend to find with your, with your clients, with these either cities or cultural institutions, that their objective, generally speaking, in engaging you is that they want to drive greater connectivity by residents, or that they're looking for sort of that visitor engagement experience?
I would say, for the most part, and I haven't asked the question, so this is really just supposition, it is more for visitors. However, in a coincidence of you asking that, just this week, it came up that somebody was actually saying, no, we really want this to be something, sorry, my screen sharing on the phone thing. Somebody said that we actually want our residents to use it a lot more as well, and they wanted to see how they could perhaps promote it with a more local bent as well for that. But I really haven't explored as much. Some of them are just exhibits, and I don't mean that in a pejorative sense. They're like temporary sculpture exhibits, so I don't necessarily know if they care who's using it. But that said, up in St. Andrews, New Brunswick, where it's the shops, I mean, they want everybody to be using it. And so there are local people like, oh, I've never been in this shop that happens to be called the Kilt and Kaboodle, but, oh, now I can learn what it's about. And that is the name of a shop. They sell kilts, actually. But yeah, so that, that's what I would say. But I, the guide I do in Westport, as an example, recently, they were like, yeah, we really want to try to, I mean, this is great, there's like 350 photos and all this kind of stuff, but we want to make it a bit more Westport-er centric, in a way, which I thought was interesting. And like, yeah, whatever I can do to, to help with that. I mean, but there's really no difference in the user experience. It's really perhaps just more of a making someone aware locally, you know, of that.
Thanks, Eric, I appreciate it.
Sure. Briefly, I went to the New Haven guy, excuse me, New Canaan Guide, and you can see they, they're, they have a splash page thanking a sponsor here. If I click Continue, for those of you who haven't used the app, but you may have seen some of these artworks, this is, you know, where they're scattered around. If I shrink the map all the way down, we'll see me as the blue dot here, here in Westchester. But if I tap the first one, you can get a sense as where I met Tucker. So if I tap that, you can see the highlight. If I tap the picture again, it'll bring up the text about it right away at the top. Click here to donate, it has some general information. The bottom is probably a link to his website. We can have as much or as little text as we want. This is, again, as I mentioned before, simply a webpage. If I click on Photos, the response time of my phone to the sharing of the screen's a little slow, but you can see I'm going to scroll through, you know, any of the photos. And because it's a, an app, if I double-tap, I can now pinch and zoom and move around it and so forth. Shrink back down, I can get directions. And if I press Play, which I shall do.
My name is Tom Burnson. I'm the visual artist inspired by the ancient practice of meditation.
I will stop, I will leave the rest to your imagination there. So, as you can see, so we got all the artists there, and each of these is the artist talking. And that's one example of how it's, of how it's used. I know I mentioned Stanford, and I'm just, so I'm just going to quickly jump to that one. There's a couple I just wanted to point out, because not everybody uses every one of the features, so I figured it's good to show a couple. They also have a splash page thanking their sponsors, as you can see. This particular summer exhibition they did, called The Art Collective, had 34 sculptures from six sculptors. And in addition, we decided to also try to promote visits to all the local restaurants. So in this case, all the red are the sculptures, all the blue are all the Stanford downtown restaurants. Where if I scroll past the sculptures who are first, I'll do it quickly, you start to get to, you know, all the different restaurants that are, that are downtown. It was more than a daunting task to try to get audio from the restaurant owners. I think of the 78 restaurants, we have two, but we were able to use a generic one. But all of the, all of the art pieces have the artists. But again, you might go there and say, this blue is just a bit overwhelming. So if I tap that icon on the top-right for Layers, I can turn off the restaurants and just see the sculptures, and I just see the red, and I just see it here. But conversely, if I was just doing businesses, I could, I could do that. The last thing I just want to point out, that I know I mentioned, was the badges. So I'm going to change to the alphabetical view, because I don't know how far away Kansas City is, but thankfully, I do know it starts with K. So I'm going to type in the Coffee Trip. They're using their splash page to just let people know, here's how it works. On the next page, you tap this little ribbon, you register, this is the only time of, as far as talking about tracking, when someone wants to participate to win a badge, this is the only time we gather information. Basically, it's, "Give us your email," because we need to let you know if you won. And the rule of that is, I personally, I don't want that information. It goes to, in this case, it goes to the KC Destinations, folks, because I have no need for anybody's email addresses. But if I tap it, I've already registered, so you can see I have zero of five coffee badges. If I tap it, it tells me what I need to do to get there. From here, I'm not going to win any, because I need to physically go there. But you can see they're kind of spread out. I mean, Kansas City is here on the right-hand side, Liberty, Missouri is maybe a half hour away, but if we go all the way into Kansas to Gardner at the bottom, or Leavenworth, I think that's probably about another hour. So it takes a while to do that. But when people do register, they can get their status and see how everything is going. And as I mentioned to you, you know, this is how many there are. Everybody has a very similar-looking page, talking about themselves, has their phone number, which is a link. You can tap it, it'll call them up and so forth. And they can do that. Since it's really, really close, I'll just show you the other badge one I mentioned, which was Indianapolis, which is much more full of content. This is the 150 art pieces. This just went live on September 5th. And interestingly, on the, on the Fox News broadcast covering the story in Indianapolis, they called me the COVID-friendly app that helps you explore the arts, which is a weird nomenclature. COVID-friendly sounds like I'm very welcoming to COVID, but it's a kind of a weird way. If I tap the badge icon here, you'll see they have a lot more badges, a bit more colorful. I was able to fake being there, which is how I advanced. But you can see the sight seeker. I have three of five, so that green circle around the outside is three-fifths of the way, performance is one-fifth, and so forth. If I tap the sight seeker, it tells me what to get to the next level. No one's ever going to get these, because you have to visit all 140 to win. They even have a mystery badge, which is, you don't know which places you need to visit, so you might as well just visit as many as you can. And they are giving a prize out to people who complete all the badges, which means you literally need to visit everything. So I think it's untenable, but nonetheless, but these could be used. I had a conversation yesterday with somebody in Virginia, in Leesburg, Virginia, who was trying to, again, get people to visit some galleries downtown. So we said, oh, you know, we could make this into like a scavenger hunt, or a puzzle hunt type of a thing. Go to this gallery, and, you know, find the woman on the blue horse, and write down the name of the, the person who painted it. But we said, but, but also, one person could do it, and then share it with 500 of their friends, and kind of defeats the purpose. But if we combine that with something like this, it's, okay, not only do you have to have the answers, you need to prove you were there. So we could have something like this, where, "Visit all seven galleries, you get the badge. The badge redemption will initiate an email saying, 'Hi Karen, congratulations, you've won this badge. Reply to this with your answer.'" And then that now is sort of a double verification. So there's, so we're playing, playing with a couple of different ways on how to do something like that. And of course, the types of questions and things they have to answer at the gallery, to be determined, but it gives us a nice way to do that, and kind of get encouraged. They were even talking about doing a, a pub crawl with something like this, which came up also recently in La Quinta, California, where they do a tequila pub crawl. And they said they used to have a passport that people would get punched, but they found that after two or three punches, people lost their card. So they were thinking, this could be, just be a better way to do that. As long as they don't lose their phone, and then that's a whole other issue, in which case, you know, who knows. But that's basically, you know, it. I mean, it does a lot more. Happy to answer questions over email or other things, but I just encourage, you know, you download it, play with it, because it's a lot easier that way. But you can see there's many, many things in here. Most of the, 98% of the audio does come from voices of authority, although in some cases, if you've ever worked with artists, they're not the easiest to wrangle. There are some that I've chased for two years, and I'm still chasing some, and, which is interesting. The historians are much more willing to talk. So I do a number of historic guides in different places. And as I mentioned, in San Remo, California, we just did that. And those have embedded videos, which are fun to watch. So we can do all kinds of fun things. And yeah, so that was basically it.
That's great, Eric. I know, that was a lot. We at the Chamber have had a couple of events where this would have been so helpful, because we used to do the old-fashioned, where you'd get a mark on a, on a piece of paper and what have you, but this is great. Does anybody have any questions for Eric?
Yeah, I do. Eric, you do the population of the app?
Yes.
And?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was going to say, for, for many reasons, the, the most of which is, most of the people I work with have enough other stuff to do. So I basically say, dump it on my desk virtually, and just, I'll tell you when I'm done.
How on earth do you go about pricing something like that?
I start off pricing it with a maximum number, and I just go down from there as people's budgets needed to be. I'm the worst at pricing. So, so tend, I tend to say, if you have 10 locations, it's 10 times more work than one location. So here is my price for one location, multiply it by as many as you have. However, if you get to have a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot, let's just start to lower the price per, because again, I don't want it to be too expensive.
So can you give us some ideas? So, like, what, what is a price per location? Or what, what might a town like the Westport have paid?
They have a bunch, so they probably paid $100 per location to set it up. So I, so the pricing has three aspects. One is, what does it cost to set it up from not existing to existing, and supporting it in total 24/7 for a year after that? Tends to be, for small installations, about a maximum of 125, sometimes 100, it just depends. As we get to be more and more, I lower to 100. And if it gets to be a whole heck of a lot, which I know is not a technical term, we just come up with a price. I, I do the public art collection for Lincoln, Nebraska, and they just said, you know, would you take, would you take this? And I said, yes. So it was a very simple negotiation, because it's just not worth it.
That's $100 for the year?
That's $100 per piece for the year, and only for the first year.
Okay.
The second year, there's... there's a maintenance support fee. And that tends to be a little bit less than half of whatever the first year was. So if the first year, it was one twenty five, then the second year it's sixty per location. If the first year someone paid a hundred per location, then the second year is fifty. If we negotiated something, we negotiate something else. So to answer, I can't see all the faces, so I don't know who asked the question. So yes, it's very difficult. It's very custom, but my goal is always to have people use it and not stress so much about the amount of money. Because I'd rather have a hundred people paying. I wouldn't really have to like to have a bunch of people paying ten dollars. But in theory, a hundred people paying ten dollars as opposed to holding out for one person to pay the thousand dollars. But, but scale that up to numbers that actually makes sense. I'd rather have a thousand people paying a thousand dollars.
Right.
Then holding off for that one, one million dollar person. Because if I lose that one, I've lost everything as opposed to I just lose one one thousand dollars.
Right.
Now, so that, that's basically it, but it's negotiable, it's scalable. And again, knock on whatever. So far, it's so far, it's worked. And for me, it's really all about making sure it serves the purpose you want it to serve than quibbling over a few hundred dollars here and there.
Great.
Did that, that answer that financial question?
Tucker, could I ask a question?
Sure.
Going back to Karen's question. Was Karen's question, do you know who's visiting your page from where?
No, I, I thought her question was, do I know who's? Where, I mean, not from where, but this is going to sound weird grammatically, but where are they from? So is this a resident of Austining, using it in Austining? Or is this someone who happened to be visiting Austining, using it in Austining? Is that a right restatement of the question?
Yeah, right. So the question was sort of, if, if we were going to do this in New Canaan, is are you finding that the motivation is towns like a Westport say, we want, we want to create incentives for our own residents to be able to be tourists within their own town and discover things? Or is it, I want people from Austin to come to, to Westport and be able to have an experience in Westport?
Right. So, so again, to answer that, I don't know. I haven't asked that question because all I know is the town, the establishment, the commission, the Chamber of Commerce that I work with, they just want to have some way to let people, in a generic sense, discover what they have. And I always say whether they're residents or not, they can all use it in the same way. Only recently has, has Westport made the overtures of, can we somehow make it a bit more Westporty?
I see. The reason I was getting the question, BJ will appreciate this. You, you basically have a website. And Google, Google Analytics allows you to see where people are coming from.
Google Analytics allows you to see where people are when they use it. So when they're using their mobile phone, I can tell because, oh, they're hitting this cellphone tower in New Canaan. They're using it in New Canaan.
Right.
But frankly, they might be in Norwalk, but kind of close to the border, but still being picked up by a cellphone tower in New Canaan. So it's a little, it's a little bit grain of salt. But if it says Chicago, I know they're neither in Norwalk nor in New Canaan.
Okay.
So, so it's where are they when they're using it? And to, to turn that into a positive as well, in a different way. I did this guide in Austin, Texas, and I send them the analytics. And inevitably, besides having Austin and maybe Houston and Dallas and a couple of other scattered ones, there's this, always this one outlier. And the last report I gave them was Sri Lanka. Somebody from Sri Lanka accessing the preservation Austin Historic Walk. I, I don't know why, hopefully for good. But they use it when they apply for grants to talk about the benefit of the outreach of, of doing this. And they say, we're getting people, they've had people from London, from Berlin, from Sri Lanka specifically, as I mentioned, doing that. And it's been great for them, which is the other reason that like, I did this science conference for in Berlin, which is one of the reasons I have it in Berlin. If anyone's ever seen the bodies exhibit with the pieces of, yeah. So I did, I did a small version of that in Berlin. So all the scientists came from all over the world, went back home, told their colleagues. So now they're using it in all these other places. And, you know, kind of like looking up a word in the dictionary in the old days when you, you turn pages and got caught by a different word. They're like, oh, hey, check this out. So who knows, that could be how they found it. But now they've got the app and are using it for other things. So every day I look and there has to be people using it in Australia and Korea and Japan. I don't have anything in those places, but every day there are people using it there, which is, which is cool.
That's fascinating. Wow.
I have a question. Which kind of thematically, which kind of pursuit of a destination, do you find it works best with? Restaurants or art exhibits? Have you come away with a sense that it is a better fit for certain kinds of destinations?
I don't necessarily think it's a better fit for one kind. I think it, it probably lends itself very well to sculpture exhibitions because getting the sculptor to talk even for two minutes is very engaging. And the towns or the organizations have that in such, for such a small time, typically a year or sometimes six months. Stanford is two months. They really want people to get there and get as much out of it as they can. So, you know, the initial, the initial projects were all about that. But once I started to expand it, like Cortland, Cortland Recreation is literally a tour of their parks and rec. This park has a skating ramp and this one has bathrooms. Yeah. And, and historic Cortland has like the reservoir and a cemetery and Aaron Copeland's house. But they, they are just as active as the other ones because it's just a quest for information. I am finding that with the, the recent additions of these badges that I mentioned, that it is resonating more with people who want to engage businesses as well. Because it's a way of like giving that extra incentive and sort of a proof and a reward. So the, as the word is getting out about, oh, you do this thing with badges. Suddenly I'm getting, you know, phone calls from Chambers of Commerce. And, and as I mentioned, the one for those galleries down in Leesburg, Virginia. And today I had a way too long conversation. It wasn't my fault. I really did stop talking for a bit with somebody in Florida who similarly was like, oh, we could do the badges and encourage. She's the one who mentioned the pub crawls. And so, you know, it, that, which was surprising to me because that's, it's so new. But that's sort of leaping out to people as like, oh, we could really use that. So I guess in a good way, no. It, it really can mold itself. But because I started out doing art, I have to say that ninety percent of what's in here is art. So it may be tainting my response a bit. But the artists really like it. I know that. Because they can communicate with their viewers, much more so than a plaque allows them to do. They can say things like, oh, I really encourage you to touch it. You know, sit on it, things like that, which causes problems in some cases. And it, it's really a great way to get people engaged. But even like I said, the stores in St. Andrews, New Brunswick, the fact that they said, you know, come on in, you may find me in the back working on something, but don't worry, just interrupt. I mean, it, it's just this personal touch that I think people are finding is, is very engaging. And any of this content can be changed like that. That was me snapping my fingers. Really quickly. So if suddenly it's like, oh, that store went out of business, this art piece got damaged. Oh, we really need to promote this right away. We can do that. So the comment that Kevin was saying about it's like a website. Yeah, the content is pulled from the web, so we can change it really simply. No one needs to re-download the app. They just need to go back into the guide and it's all new content potentially.
Yeah, that was going to be my question. That's, that was.
Yeah.
Good one.
Which is nice. You don't want to have people keep downloading it down. So the actual download size of this app, I don't know why I touched Cortland, is, is nine megabytes. So for those, you know, it's, it's very small.
And it's free to the user?
It is one hundred percent free to the user. And anonymous unless you decide to participate in buying for a badge.
Anybody else? Eric, really helpful, fascinating. I can think of a lot of potential uses that we would have in or around town. So I will be back in touch with you. I appreciate your time very much.
You're welcome.
Being here, I know there's many on this call that will probably be thinking of ways to use it as well. So thanks to Nancy and Beth for bringing it to our attention. And thank you for making the, the Sculptor Trail so interactive this season.
Great. Well, thank you so much for the time and definitely send email questions. I'm much less verbal in, in that.
You did a great job. You did a great job.
Okay, thank you so much.
Bye. Take care, bye. Interesting, right? I mean, that's something that we've all talked about over the years and it just seems so simple. And he seems like he's got it all there. And obviously it's working in other towns, which is kind of nice. Moving right along, we have Andrew Armstrong here. Many of you might know Andrew. But Andrew, you grew up in New Canaan, correct? Oh, wait, you're muted.
Such a Zoom amateur, huh?
Did you grow up in New Canaan?
Yeah, yeah. First grade through, through twelfth, graduated NCHS in nineteen ninety two.
Okay, that's what I thought. Andrew is going to talk to you about something that he's working on with a few folks in town that definitely plays right into T Dax mission. So Andrew.
Thanks, Tucker. And I apologize, I don't have a, a beautiful PowerPoint. That was, that was an incredible demonstration. First off, big thanks to Bob Doran. He's been really such an incredible source of inspiration. And we've been talking a lot about what I am proposing to bring to New Canaan. So I'm reluctant to give too many of the same details that I, I know that I've shared with some of you in this group before, but just broad brushstrokes. I grew up in New Canaan, accidentally fell in love with classical music. I accidentally heard a piece by Frederick Chopin the same year that I had my first crush on a girl from summer camp and ruined my life. And I've just been addicted to practicing and playing classical music ever since. So, yeah, I've just spent the last twenty five years just building a career. I travel around the world playing concerts and a great majority of what I play are chamber music concerts. At chamber music concerts, it's sort of that amazing middle ground. It's not a single person on the stage playing a solo recital for you, but it's also not eighty people in an orchestra. You know, it's not that big of a sprawling canvas. There's a great intimacy there. And in chamber music, if you think about it, it, these were originally pieces that would be played in chambers, in salons. You know, for gatherings of fifteen or seventy people in, in some great big ballroom or something. And so this type of music is incredibly versatile. It, it can really reach the apex of intimacy as well as of, of grandeur and brilliance. It can, it could be a two people, three people, five people on stage playing music. The other thing about, about this, this art form, chamber music, and I hesitate to name specific towns. But there are several towns nearby that have orchestras. And in terms of bang for your buck, in terms of having something really first rate in town, for a much more modest amount of community investment, we could have a world-class chamber music series in New Canaan for, for a fraction of what some towns nearby pay to have orchestras that are what you would call regional orchestras. You know, not, not the Berlin Philharmonic, not the New York Philharmonic kind of quality. So the, the dream that we have in mind is four concerts, five concerts a year. And I've been told by some, some music teachers in town, they say, well, New Canaan is not a, is not a chamber music town. That they're not interested in chamber music. There, there have been concerts at the Carriage Barn through the years and it's never quite caught on. And I always compare it to coffee. I think if, if, if all that's in town is, is diner coffee, then nobody's going to want to spend three fifty on a, on an amazing cappuccino and on a stump town or a blue bottle. You know, quartado. But I, I absolutely believe that we can build the culture that, that we can build the, the hunger for this really quickly. I think all it takes is one, one time coming to one of our concerts with, with the best players. And one thing that these concerts will be doing, how to put this? I'll be introducing the pieces that will be playing. And it's, it's really important to us not to be an intimidating, you know, if you don't know chamber music, you can't set foot in our concerts kind of feeling that. This needs to be an incredibly embracing, opening, inviting series. And there are ways of, if you'll forgive the term educating an audience that, you know, maybe there are people in the audience that, you know, I've never heard the particular piece of music that's being played. Or even any music, chamber, chamber music. And there's a way of reaching them and giving them a sense of what they're about to hear that, that we can achieve, I think. The other thing I'd like to mention is just that I think the time is so right for chamber music right now. There's so many qualities about chamber music that we are starving for. When you do it right, you gather everyone together without any phones, without wifi, without any electricity. The violinists are holding pieces of wood that were varnished by Stradivari, you know, two hundred or three hundred years ago. Everything is acoustic, everything is made by people. And we're interpreting writing ink on paper from souls that passed away hundreds of years ago. And we're bringing their spirits to life, their, their most intimate thoughts. And I think we're all starving for that, for that type of experience now, especially with coronavirus. I think we're just dying to reach across the ether and, and meet each other in the middle. And also, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention just the national, the national kind of dialogue going on right now, which is in, in many respects, I think worsening. And chamber music is a place where we can, we can be together just as warm human beings, neighbors, brothers, sisters, loving each other. And I, I think everybody's hungry for that right now. So we're looking to push forward very soon. You could probably imagine after I thought we would get, kick it off when I visited town in March and then coronavirus came along and said, that's not possible. But Bob and, and a couple of really great visionaries have kind of put, put into my mind that if we could have an outdoor concert before it gets too cold, that people would love to get together and have that feeling of community again. So I'm, I don't have any, any hard, hard details yet about that. But we are hoping to have something put together over this next month where, where people could come together and have a picnic and sit with their families socially distanced safely and hear live music. And also to have that videotaped so that we can continue. A lot of classical musicians have, we, we've all been learning quickly, the whole art of virtual recordings and kind of trying to take the concert experience online as long as we need to continue with that. Although that's, that's obviously not the ideal with these concerts. And if I could just say one last thing before monopolizing your whole evening. My dream for this series is not, it doesn't end with the idea of New Canaan having a great series that New Canaan could be proud of and, and people coming in from Fairfield County and New York and wanting to hear our concerts and what we're creating. That would be the beginning and that would be a great beginning that would make me really happy. But I, I dream of a next step where we in New Canaan could simultaneously create something great for our own community, but also pay it forward at the same point. So once I've got, you know, these international kind of rock star classical musicians in town, we use our resources to share them where they can make great differences. I'd love to, I'd love to have us playing in prisons. I'd love to have us playing for assisted living facilities. I'd love us to get into schools, our own schools, but also schools in, in less advantaged cities and if you will, you know, if we could get to Bridgeport and Danbury. And if that's something that New Canaan were able to pay forward, I'd be so thrilled for, for it to have that dual purpose. Because I think sometimes there's almost a guilty pleasure when you're hearing a really great concert. You're sitting there thinking, you know, why do I, why do I get to experience something this wonderful? And I would love it to have this kind of two sides of the coin that it's something New Canaan does for itself, but also to make the world a better place beyond the borders of, of New Canaan. And with, with that said, I should mention that the, the idea is that it'll be called New Canaan Chamber Concerts. It's really important to me that it has the name New Canaan in it. Because I'm pretty sure that people from Westport and Wilton and Ridgefield are going to be fighting with our residents for seats. And it's going to be well attended. But I just wanted to be completely clear to, to any Fairfield Countyers and beyond that this is a New Canaan, this is something New Canaan has chosen to muster. And this is a New Canaan product.
Great.
I think that's nuts and bolts of it. I've probably forgotten a lot. I really should have done a PowerPoint, but it's the basic idea.
Anybody have any questions for Andrew? Heather?
I do.
I do. Oh.
So I don't know if this is a thought, but as you were talking, I was wondering if we could possibly, if you're playing outdoors, possibly this could be a weekend idea, or a Saturday idea, or Sunday, and we could close Elm Street? And what if you set up chairs six feet apart, et cetera, in rows? And then, you know, back and then behind that would be standing room, or on the sidewalk standing room. And then I don't feel like it's as a secluded thing when you want, you know, more people to come rather than the people who just know about it. When you want it to be all-encompassing, you might get people say like, hey, I really love this music. I never would have gone to Waveney, let's say, to listen to it, but you captured someone who was around. So I just think, because we have the ability, I believe, it's not as difficult to close Elm Street as it has in the past, so I thought that could be a good idea.
Thanks for saying that, Heather. You've just scratched an ancient itch of mine, because I always fantasize about busking. It's too bad I'm a pianist, but I've always fantasized about taking a digital keyboard out onto a street corner somewhere, but I always feel like I'll get in trouble with my promoters and such for doing that. But that is a fantasy of mine, just like it is of you, Heather, the idea that it would be great to confront someone that's just whistling and walking down the street thinking they're heading to Dunkin' Donuts, not realizing they're about to fall in love with a new type of music they had never really been exposed to. So you think that that's something we could logistically approach at some point? Because I'd be all in on that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm jumping in now. I think we'll have to, I'm sure you have some proposals in mind, and so we should probably sit down and talk about that before anything gets too far going. But I love that idea, Heather, as well. We just have to make sure, obviously with COVID right now, that we're abiding by all the rules of the governor and that kind of thing. Jack, did you have a question?
I do. And first of all, I have to say hello to you, Andrew. I used to own the Gramophone Shop, and I remember you coming in.
Wow.
And I think I sold your CD for sure.
You did. Yeah, it's great to see you.
Good to see you. Actually, it's interesting Heather mentioned that, because I do think we're rich in venues in New Canaan, for sure. But because of what we are trying to accomplish here, I actually thought of Elm Street also, the slope of the street, and you could call attention to the town and our cultural aspects. I think the town, you know, it has, in the churches, for example, I think we have many choir masters and orchestra directors, which is unusual. So I've always thought there was interest in classical music here. I found that. And anyways, I think it's a wonderful idea to do this here and call attention to this. We had Duke Ellington come here, and it was a tremendously successful concert. We've had big artists come.
We had Duke Ellington here in New Canaan?
We did.
When?
At the St. Mark's.
Wow, I did not know that.
Yep. So anyways, and I just think, as I said, the venues are here. I think there is a large interest in classical music here, or has been. And I think if the work was done, it could become a very nice event.
Thanks, Jack. That's great to hear. It's interesting when I
Happy to help.
When I came to town to present in March, and then coronavirus hit, I thought, you know, I really, I said, what an idiot. How did I mess up that timing so bad? And now coronavirus is making things so hard. But a funny thing is, one of the things a lot of people said to me was, well, you know, if someone in New Canaan is a classical music fan, they want to, they just go into New York City. And I think one of the kind of blessing, one of the changes that's happened with coronavirus is that I think people are going to be
Oh, yeah.
Will love to have the opportunity to hear New York City quality, you know, international quality music right in our town.
And actually, Andrew, I forgot to mention, you also have Carimore. So Carimore is an example of a venue close by that has been developed
Yeah.
And is tremendously successful, you know, as a promoter of the arts.
Indeed.
So we could do that here, you know?
Well, I just love that the first two comments were about taking it to the masses. I'm so grateful you both started us off on that foot, because that is absolutely the mindset I would love us to have from the start.
I'm just a guest tonight, but if I could have one comment, I also think it's a really beautiful project. And my thinking was also with Carimore, just knowing there's so many people in our town that support Carimore and are very involved there. And perhaps there would be a way to collaborate with them on one of your performances that you've dreamed and just kind of bring that energy together.
Yeah, thanks for mentioning that. Carimore is, Carimore was actually, growing up in New Canaan, Carimore was one of the places that sort of nurtured me through the awkward early stages of late teenagehood, early twenties. So there's a really great relationship there.
I just went down, crap, guys.
What's that?
Did you guys lose?
We still hear you, Tucker.
Your video's frozen, but it's, your face looks normal. Have we lost Tucker?
There you are.
You are.
Sorry, I lost you all. My internet unstable connection.
You know how hard it is to mute Tucker.
Sorry, what did I miss?
I think we just waited.
Oh, okay, sorry. So last I left it, we were talking about Carimore. Karen, did you have something you wanted to ask? Nope, you're good? All right. So what are the next steps, Bob and Andrew? What can the TDAC group do for you?
Bob, you raising your hand?
Yeah, I was just raising my hand, Tucker. I didn't know if it was appropriate for me to talk at what time. But I think to Heather's earlier point, and to Jack as well, in my conversations with Andy, that I've been so thrilled and excited that he's, you know, been willing to talk to me and make me part of this journey with him. We are talking about simulcasting concerts. We're talking about looking at venues. You know, we just have to helicopter in a piano here and there, Andy, right? But that can all be worked around. I think for this group and for the town, but it's important to know that in, Andy, we have a native son here who is renowned for his work. And for those of you who haven't heard his work or know enough about him, you know, I'll send you one of the links he sent me. You need to hear him, you need to know more about him. I think what's also great is that he is talking about building a lasting organization for this community. So this isn't, I'm here, I want to do a couple of concerts. He's talking about building an organization that will grow and be known for, you know, as something that New Canaan has. He won't say this, nor should he probably, but Andy's a virtuoso. There's magic in what he creates, and he is correct that I think the time is right here because of COVID, because of what we're looking for. We're open more to these kind of, you know, intimate experiences, and we're looking to connect right now. So again, you know, even if you don't think, even if you think you might not like chamber music, you know, listen to him playing, and he'll win your heart. This is also another reason for people to visit New Canaan, to make New Canaan a destination, which is what we've talked about here for so long. And in chamber music, there is also a social sharing aspect that, you know, Andy will speak far better to and more eloquently than I can. But it adds to the offerings that this community has for the residents to live here, for families who want to move here, and as a destination for visitors, like Summer Theater of New Canaan, like the Carriage Barn, like the Land Trust, like the Town Players of New Canaan. This is another asset that helps to make us another destination, like the Moderns. And I'll just finish my, you know, stuff here by saying, you know, Andy is, he's amazing. He is an entertainer, and he is a rock star, and he's New Canaan's rock star. So I'll throw it back to you, Andy. That's my two cents.
I'd also like to, oh, sorry, Andrew.
I just want to say thank you. That's so nice of you, Bob.
As someone who's involved with the planning of the new New Canaan Library, I also think that, long-term, the idea of the chamber music occurring in the library's outdoor green, which is going to be an intimate outdoor setting that is New Canaan, the heart of New Canaan, is especially equipped for this kind of a venue, and even kind of à la Leonard Bernstein, kind of an opportunity for teaching and exposing the children. You know, there's a great children's program in the library to chamber music, to, so I think the library would be very interested in collaborating with you. The green is going to be open to a number of community performances and also library programming, but I think it's a really perfect fit for you.
And Amanda, sorry, just to throw in, but even inside is what I've talked to Andy about. I mean, this could be an in-residence relationship.
Absolutely.
Right?
Yeah, thanks, Amanda. You've just spoken exactly to where I think our most brilliant-looking future is. I've talked with Ellen and Lisa about this a lot, and I've even spoken with them about specifically how they're going to be designing the performance space and the lawn with exactly that view in mind. What I love about it is that we could have an indoor concert that all of the classical music buffs that want their music without hearing anybody, having a picnic next to them and talking to each other, they could sit inside and hear a great concert. But through all of these techniques we've all been learning with coronavirus, we've got, we're all so much better videographers and live streamers. We also pump it out onto that lawn, just like you're describing. And then families, all of a sudden, can come. They don't have to find babysitters for their eight-year-olds, they can bring their eight-year-olds, and their eight-year-olds can hear it in the background. And if they're not listening, you know, totally attentively, that's just fine. So my dream is exactly, just exactly what you're describing, and I think it's absolutely doable. You know, I was in Seattle two years ago for the Chamber Music Festival there, and we gave all these concerts in the orchestra hall, and it's all kind of the same audience members, each concert that you knew you were going to see, the people that already know and love classical music. And this sort of speaks to Heather's point about busking. They had one park concert where they played outside, and I went to attend that. I wasn't playing in that one. And I'm so glad I wasn't playing in it, because I got to just sort of circulate around the park. And all of a sudden, the age range went from two to 100 instead of, you know, 60 to 100. And the nationalities, the ethnicities, that there were bikers in full biking gear that would just pull up and hear that there was music, and they would just stop and lie down and plant their, you know, head on the seat of the bicycle and listen. That's a dream I have for us, because you never know who's going to catch the bug. You know, and someone could hear it once and say, that's not my cup of tea, but at least they will have had the exposure.
Really great stuff. Anybody else for Andrew? Andrew, thank you. Andy, Andrew?
Yeah, Andy's great. In terms of your question, I have to claim stupidity. I don't know specifically what to ask TDAC for, except
Bob does.
Bob does. I'll leave it to Bob. I don't know enough about what to be greedy.
I think first and foremost, we obviously want to know about all of these kinds of things that could be happening in and around our town. So just for us to be aware that you're on this mission, and there may be ways that we can help you, you know, just support from the organization in terms of all of us just individually knowing about it and telling people and that kind of thing. So it sounds like you've still got some work to do and getting it all together, and so we'll sort of wait for you guys to do that and report back, and we'll be excited to hear more.
Yeah, Tucker, this was really about, if you look at this group here, if you look at this group here, you know, so many organizations are represented, and the interest of, again, tourism and economic development. It was really exciting to have Andy talk to this group and talk about building another organization in town that is another great valuable asset to this town. And the ability to partnership with, like, the library and other organizations, even, you know, the Glass House, all these kind of places where this kind of music can just build, be an integral part of the community, so.
Do you want to throw one last thing in, Tucker, before?
Sure, go for it.
Just a quick word that, as this season, I almost was wondering if, I wouldn't even get started with anything this fall, and then a few voices said, hey, we're ready, come on, let's try this. But this season will, by definition, we'll have a lot more element of jazz to it. It's so hard to plan right now. So we're looking at a very last-minute possibility that we might be able to put together in one case. It's not clear, you know, it's so hard to say, on December 3, we will do an in-person concert, or February 3, we'll plan. So this will not be what would, looking forward in future seasons, the idea is we have a season that is really kind of nailed down with a season booklet and a real known destination. These are the dates when New Canaan has its big chamber concerts and such. But this year, all to say, don't be surprised if you see us sort of improvising as things have to adjust at the last minute with all these changing regulations and that sort of thing.
I think that's one thing everybody's learned this year, is how to adjust and how to pivot and all of that. So I'm sure I'll be hearing more from you in my role over at Town Hall, but I thank you very much for being here tonight and thrilled that you're bringing your skills back to our beautiful town that was your home.
Thanks, Tucker. Thank you all so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, we are moving right along. We've got Amanda and Abby and Nancy to give us some updates on everything that's going on with October for Design. So Nancy, I'm just going to turn it over to you, and you can, and Amanda, and you guys can tell us what's happening, and Abby can introduce her project over with Fred.
Well, the good news is the website's live. We have the first event, which is Jackie Shapiro's lunch next Friday. The lunch is almost sold out. We've got about 75 people signed up for the Zoom presentation, but I'm expecting that to increase. The website looks good. I think there's a fair number of activities. The chamber has been amazing in that the Builders Challenge, the sort of Lego build, that's been done through the chamber, and we're really thrilled that so many stores wanted them, and so kids are picking up their base plates. And the Glass House is doing something called Where's Philip?, where they're hiding plastic Philip Johnson glasses in the stores, and there's, kids can pick up a passport and go find them. And the stores have been wonderful in wanting those glasses, too. And Gina Federico designed the passports, so that looks good. So we'll see. I mean, it obviously is much more scaled down than we had originally envisioned because of two sort of big initiatives that we've been working on, one with Bob and one with the library, the Women Leaders of New Canaan series, and the Start of Change Addressing Racism series. We put those on because they're really about community. So the calendar is populated, and we have some lectures, and even, like, Keith Simpson is now going to do a presentation on the installation of the Blue Home prefabricated house he did, and the landscaping work he did around that. So it's still, people are still sort of jumping in, wanting to do things. We'll see. I mean, we're going to have to get to November 1 and look at who signed up for what, and what we can learn, what can be improved. But, you know, we're guardedly optimistic that things are underway.
Here we go. Fabulous. Thank you. Amanda, want to tell us about everything over at the Noiz House?
Yes, well, I'm going to introduce Abby, who already popped into frame a few minutes ago, but I'll first say that some of the TDAC members went by the Noiz House last Friday, courtesy of Fred Noiz's invitation. And we saw the fabulous installation that's the brainchild of Abby, the art installation there. And just a little bit of background on Abby, she's a New Canaan resident who lives in a mid-century modern house in New Canaan, designed by Hugh Smolyn. And Abby, and I got to know each other last fall, co-chairing the gala at Grace Farms. But Abby is front and center in the international contemporary art world, and has served as the artistic director of the Frieze Art Fair for Asia and the Americas. And just last year, 2019, it feels so long ago, she launched a new art fair called Object and Thing in New York City that brings together 20 and Thing in New York City that brings together 20th and 21st century art objects from the leading galleries, art and design galleries around the world. But because of COVID this year, the second annual art object and thing couldn't happen. So Abby came up with this visionary idea to use the Elliot Noise Glass House as an installation site. And last Saturday was the first day of this COVID cautious exhibition. And I'm going to hand it over to Abby to tell us about how that went. But also, this concept of spurring this innovative kind of use of this home in New Canaan for an art installation is very novel and possibly has some future opportunities. So Abby, take away.
Thank you. Thank you, Amanda, for such a kind introduction. And thank you, Tucker, for inviting me tonight as well. It's a real pleasure to be part of this committee this evening. And I see Karen, we're often on meetings together for Grace Farms, too. So lots of friendly, familiar faces. And I see Fred Noise has joined us as well. Fred and I are spending a lot of time together at Safe Distancing and with our masks on over at his house. I have prepared a presentation, so I'm just gonna pull up my screen to do that.
You should be able to share your screen, no problem.
Let's see. Okay. Um, great. Does everyone see that okay?
Yep.
Excellent. Okay. So, um, as Amanda said, I had all of my plans in place to have our second edition of Object and Thing at 99 Scott in Brooklyn. And that was going to be first week of May. And of course, as COVID was hitting New York, we knew it was not a wise decision to bring thousands of people together. And in many ways, this project is very much kind of a family operation. My husband, Matt Bengzer, is also in the contemporary art world and is a partner in Blumenpo Gallery, a very large international powerhouse gallery that's primarily in Los Angeles, Tokyo, and then he opened their New York space seven years ago. And so we had a lot of time together in the spring at home with our children. And on some of our daily COVID hikes, thought, is there a way that we could still safely provide an experience for people to view art in person? And this was at a time when a lot of art was shifting into the digital realm. A lot of the big fairs, Frieze and Basel among them, were announcing these viewing rooms. In fact, Basel just inaugurated a new viewing room this week. There's certainly an active place for that in, in the art world and in the art market. But there's nothing like that physical experience. So I wanted to find a meeting ground to do that. And an exhibition that would be appointment only certainly felt like a safe way to do so. But then, the other love of mine is our history of modernism in New Canaan. And so as Amanda mentioned, I live in a 1964 Hugh Smolin house on Cheychester. When I first moved here, I quickly wanted to see as many of the iconic modernist houses as I could. And Christie McClure is a great friend of mine. And I said, you know, how could I ever see the Noise House? And she said, let me introduce you to Fred. And ever since, uh, kind of November morning over at the house with him, with the beautiful fire going, it has been a magical place to me. And Christie has since formed an advisory committee that meets with Fred and Fred is is really now the leader of it, thinking about possibilities for the house and what it could be in the future. And a big goal of mine for this exhibition is to, is to show the house full of new current vibrant energy again with art and design and put it out there in the public domain as a very important example of mid-century modernism and show that New Canaan is a real cultural destination for contemporary art and design. So I, it's just, it ended up a project that ticked lots of boxes. So for those, let's see. Why? There we go. Okay. So for those of you who were unable to miss to be there last week, I'm just going to scan through the exhibition rather quickly and then kind of get into some facts that I think might be relevant for this committee, too. And certainly, if any of you would like to visit and haven't yet, please let me know at any time and we'll make it happen. But we've brought together over 80 works of contemporary art and design, featuring 34 artists. These are really some of the most significant artists living today, and both from the art world and the design world. It's a very diverse exhibition. It's, you know, lots of female artists' work. We've got artists from Japan, Brazil, African Americans, young artists, old artists, deceased artists. It's, we've, we've kind of covered a lot of viewpoints there. And this is how you enter the house. So this is if, right on Country Club Road, Fred has a U-shaped driveway. You approach the house, the barn doors open, and you go into the courtyard. And you immediately are encountered with a very significant nine and a half foot tall bronze sculpture by Alma Allen. Alma is an artist based in Mexico City. His work is highly sought after, represented by Blumenpo and Paul Kasman Gallery in New York. Paul had a big show this past winter, total, an artist with a big kind of cult following. This is situated almost exactly where the Noise family had Calder's first large scale outdoor stable piece that was commissioned by the family, Black Beast, which they donated to MoMA in the 90s. So we knew when we were going to do a show here, we better find something pretty significant for that spot. This view also gives us a great chance of seeing a new furniture commissioned by Green River Project. Green River Project, if you just Google them, they're, they've become the real darlings of the design world in the past three years. Their practice comes out of the art world, but they're all about making functional furniture now. And so I challenged them to make a new set of outdoor furniture where the Noise family typically has outdoor deck furniture, and they came up with this. I'm super excited. This is launching their new furniture collection, which is inevitably going to be picked up by Architectural Digest and lots of design publications. They're actually coming tomorrow, Friday, to shoot their whole collection down by the Noise family's stream and to shoot this collection here, or the suite that we have in the courtyard, too. So I'm very happy that's gonna put the house in New Canaan out there again. These Kazunori Hamana pots, one of Japan's most talented living ceramicists who works by the sea. He finishes all of his vessels and actually leaves them outdoors with the elements to interact with them. The one on the right is a collaboration he did with his wife. She adds the painting and the organic elements. This site-specific project is by Spanish artist, Daniel Stegman. And so with COVID, he didn't travel to the house first, but working from renderings, measurements and images, came up with this idea of a real interaction and kind of dialogue between the architecture, art, and landscape. Another of Hamana's pots, we wanted to reference the history of the Noise family's art, which included several tapestries by Matisse Miro. So here I was able to bring in a Sheila Hicks tapestry from 1978, a prayer rug. And there's a small vessel by a South Carolinian ceramicist as well, Jim McDowell. And here you approach the Noise family's kitchen. And we have, so you're, it's a real treasure hunt when you're in the house. We've kept as many, much of the, the family's furnishings as sort of made sense, where we could also still highlight the works of art and design that we were bringing in. So the carved wooden sculpture on the left, for example, is an African sculpture from the family. And then we've installed around that. So above the kitchen shelving is a tapestry of Fay Too Good. It's a London-based designer who just opened a brand new show at Friedman Benda in New York that is really highly sought after, good to go see. Fay pulled this work from that show for us, for the house, when she heard about it. I do a lot of work with Fay, and she just thought that this would, would be beautifully placed here, which it is. On the dining table, we've placed a vase of Gaetano Paché, another Fay Too Good vessel, some vessels from a New Mexican artist, Johnny Ortiz, and then a Brazilian furniture designer, Hugo Francha's stool is on the far right. Here is our kind of iconic painting moment, which I saw Fred in the background there on the Zoom. Mark Groton is really one of the world's most sought-after abstract painters. He's based in LA. He has not made a horizontal painting in three decades. This is sparking a new series for him within his Capri paintings, where he is painting horizontally. He did this specifically for the Noise fireplace with these dimensions. Around it, we have another Gaetano Paché resin vase, a Linda Bangliss ceramic on the coffee table, two Jim McDowell ceramics. And that, of course, placing the vessels on the coffee table references the Noise family's history of often moving and placing smaller maquettes and vases and things by some of the modern period's greats, Picasso and Barbara Heffert. And so here we've moved back into the study. We have works on the wall from a Brazilian neo-concrete artist, Sergio Camargo, Mimi Lauter, an LA-based painter, Palo Nausirith, a Brazilian photographer and performance artist, and Erin Garber Mikowska, an abstract painter based in Los Angeles. The vessels on the table include Jim McDowell, Misama Yasunaga, who just opened a new show at a gallery in LA, Ruben Valentine, more McDowell's, Toni Marsh, who's a Long Beach, California-based ceramicist that was a finalist for the Louvre Craft Prize. The iconic Elliot Noise-designed Selectric IBM typewriter, we knew we wanted to share that with, with those that would see it. And we place that with a contemporary London-based industrial designer's telephone made from nylon by Philippe Maloud. And here we've now shifted to the other side of the house. This is Molly Noise's office, former office. Here we have a stool on the ground on the left by Pablo Limón. This is actually made from foam treated with silver nitrate. When you come, it's really fun to sit in it and see how durable it in fact is. Two paintings hang on the wall by Lucas Aruda. The sculpture on the right on the desk is by a Japanese artist, Mi Hodoji. Oops, sorry. And then we have three vessels on the left by actually a very local Connecticut ceramicist, Frances Palmer. She's based in Weston, Connecticut, a real treasure that we, we have her working in Connecticut. These are some of her first examples of wood-fired vessels. And she also, there's a new book coming out on her whole practice this fall, too. She very much is kind of integrated with the seasons and an avid gardener. I know lots of people in the New Canaan Garden Club have, have visited her gardens. And we're very lucky throughout our visit season, she is going to come and replenish our vases with fresh flowers. And so I'm looking forward to seeing her tomorrow and see what she brings over to us. And here we've entered the master bedroom. And we have some examples of drawings by Yoshi Tomonara, one of Japan's greatest contemporary artists, Patricia Lette, a Brazilian painter, Gaetano Paché vase, vessel, Green River Project, we commissioned them to do this lamp, which is actually made from airplane parts. Noise family furniture is integrated with another Paché vessel, and then a bronze sculpture of Alma Allen's, the same designer that we saw, an artist in the courtyard. And another view back towards the bed, Antonio Obaz's painting, Megumi Arrai did the textile piece for the bed, and a couple of Frances's flowers there. And then just to close with a last view, this is a painting by a Japanese abstract painter, Tomago Kita, paired with two Daniel Valero chairs. Valero's based in Mexico and these utilize antique Guatemalan textiles. And then several more of Frances's vessels. So just to say, these really are, I'm, I'm not sure if everyone is a fan of contemporary art, but to say these really are the leading lights of contemporary art and design. I'm thrilled that we have their work here in New Canaan. It certainly has struck a nerve in the art world where we have enormous demand for people to come and see it. And, and certainly, media and press are picking up on it, too. So just some of the print media, we've already realized to date, we are published in September issue of Rob Report. We were in the September 5th issue of Wall Street Journal magazine. All of this is early on realized media, so these are announcement pieces, but, but all of them include images and, and text, as well as interior design. I just got my copy of Gallery Magazine. Their Fall Quarterly is also, has a great feature on us, too. And then just some of the digital media, we're beginning to realize, AD Pro did an in-depth tour, Art John's, Rob Report again, Wall Street Journal newspaper. And then social media, I was thrilled, on September 15th, AD's main Instagram account, which has 6.6 million followers, posted our photo of the courtyard. And that, just today I checked, is way above 29,000 likes at this point. As organizers, we have pretty strong followings, especially of art people around the world. And we're constantly posting to social media about this show. It's a real priority show for all of us. And then just, you know, last weekend was our, our first weekend for visits. This is when I'm really making sure some, some important influencers are coming through. So just to show you some of those and that I saw posting about us, so Green River, and they influence a large fashion audience, too. Cause, who by the way, is our new resident in town, so I'm thrilled about that. So he posted his 3.1 million followers. You know, Patrick Lee from the New York Times, Frances Palmer herself. Media is continuing to post onto their Instagram accounts, too. So I love the feature that Pinup did in a bunch of their stories and, and posts. I just saw White Wall did that earlier today, some art advisors. So that runs the gamut. And then I think all of you know, because we did come earlier to the committee, and especially I'm very grateful for Amanda's speaking with you all, when I initially had this idea in, in April and May. But we are really controlling the visitor access. We would want to do that anyway because we're in a residential neighborhood, but it's a super priority, given the state of the world and COVID. So at first, our plan was just to be open on Saturdays from 10 until 6:00. We immediately filled those spots right away. And with Tucker's blessing, we have now added Fridays. I released that opportunity to our waitlist only on Tuesday, and it filled in the first five to 10 minutes. So all of our spots are now fully taken, except where I've held back some for media and special guests, but that's still, we really need to be sure get in. So what we're doing is one household per hour. We cap that at, at 10, so no more than 10 people per hour. And that household has to be very comfortable, you know, with who's coming in. So that could be literally your children and, and the parents in one house, or it could be an office environment where someone feels comfortable with those people. But, but safety is, is our priority. So our guess is that usually means one to two cars, maybe three in the driveway at a time. We will always have a gallery attendant present. And the address information is only provided to confirmed visitors. And we include a lot of language around that, about the discretion that we expect with that address information. In terms of safety measures, all of the visits are booked through advanced reservations. We know absolutely everyone coming in. We require masks to be worn on site, even outdoors, by everyone there at all times. And then we cap the visits at the 45-minute mark. We really do make sure everyone moves along. And that gives some time to make sure the, the guests are, are gone before the new guests come in and our gallery attendant can spray down any surfaces that she's noticed might be touched while someone is there. We realize that we're reaching a wider world than those that can physically come to New Canaan. So we have designed a digital experience. Very lucky to work with a real talent in our community, Michael Biondo, great architectural photographer, who also made a fabulous video for us. And then I was really grateful, Ruichi Sakamoto gave us the rights to use his music to accompany our video. So the video is about four and a half minutes long. It is on all of our websites as organizers. If you have a chance, please consider watching it. Our installation photography is also on the site. And then I commissioned an essay by an independent writer and curator, Glenn Adamson. Glenn was the former director of Museum Art and Design in New York. Glenn was the former director of Museum Art and Design in New York, a longtime curator at the VNA. He's on faculty adjunct at Yale and the Cooper Hewitt Program. So he is a talent. And just, you know, beginning to suss out an impact on local businesses. I mean, certainly if this were not a COVID time, we would love to host a dinner and use a caterer in town, things like that. Of course, you know, we're more limited at this time. But I will say, we are receiving lots of requests from visitors about where they should go for lunch. We give a whole list of recommendations, but our team so far's favorite is Rosie's. And our staff that's been coming in, especially during install, we had a team that would come up from the city. And some of the gallery owners from Brazil, from Mendes Wood, were staying in town. So we patronized the Roger Sherman. And then for all the e-blasts we're sending out, we do have shared language where we recommend visiting the Glass House and the great visitation that they're allowing now with the grounds passes. So I know just anecdotally, as I was chatting with people coming through this past weekend, at least 20 guests said they were coming or going between the Glass House as they saw us. So I'd be most happy to answer any questions. I really thank everyone for their support and we're, you know, super excited to just bring some of the contemporary art and design that both Matt, my husband and I love, work with, have always kind of had as more of our work lives in the city. But I'm just thrilled that we can have them in New Canaan now.
Thank you, Abby. Is everybody back here?
I just wish to say something like that. So anyways, Abby, I was, I was, I was there over the weekend and it was just a great exhibition to see. I felt I was an art church. It was terrific. And it just to me also calls attention to the power that these houses have. And actually, you know, I'm in real estate and specialize in the moderns. At the Arthur Holden House, the house I've worked on, we actually had a gallery come in. And it's very powerful, you know, the showing of art in these houses. And there's, you know, many venues to do this in and spread the word about our great history. But I think what you've done has been really terrific. I enjoyed it immensely.
Thank you. Very kind. And I couldn't agree more. You know, these are very special houses. And I think that activating them in new ways that can reach other audiences is a way that we continue to share that history that's so important to our town.
Yep, yep. And I like how you've hit all the points, the restaurants. It just interfaces with everything. These houses are beneficial when used in these good ways.
I'd like to weigh in here.
Fred.
I'd like to weigh in here of how exciting it is to have the house open and the exhibit that Abby has put into it. And capitalize on exactly the aspect of the house that allows it to be part of the town. Just exactly what everybody's been saying, John's been saying. It is exactly my goal that the house should be an entity that the house, that the town can enjoy, that it can be linked with all the other houses, that it can be a venue for the arts to be capitalized in the town. In this case, it's for an art show, but in any other way that it can make New Canaan the cultural center of this area. So I'm just all for what Abby's done and hope we can do as much of this as we can.
And the house looks happy to have the artwork in it, Fred.
I was just gonna say the same thing. None of this really would have happened, Fred, if you hadn't, you know, made it happen, really. I mean, you've been wanting this and here it is. And certainly the recognition that it's getting is so good for New Canaan. I was there last week. I loved seeing it, but to have that private tour again tonight, Abby, was really special. And one of the huge assets that we've got in this town.
I'd like to thank you, Tucker, and Amanda for helping us understand what it means to do this and the support of TDAC. And the very existence of TDAC, your vision, Kevin, to make TDAC, to be able to understand what this town really has, whether it's looking at the music, as we heard earlier, or various other kinds of arts, the initiation of October for Design, this is all terrific. It's all coming together. There's such energy in this town of people who have different talents and different ideas. Nobody's working against it. Everybody's working for it. It couldn't be better.
It's true.
Thank you, Fred. You know, we just feel like we're kind of weighed down right now by COVID. We could be running rather than crawling at this point, so.
In some ways, COVID's been an enabler of some of these events too.
I was gonna say the same.
And that's an extensive amount of art that you installed, Abby. That's phenomenal.
Thanks, Greg. Well, you know what goes into these things. That means a lot. Crates that have shown up from San Paulo, Mexico City, Tokyo, everywhere. So, and we had a wonderful team from Acumen working on that install. And Greg knows, so thank you very much.
I get emails from Abby at 2:30 in the morning. That's what it took.
Those chairs in the courtyard, I sat in those when I was there the other day. They're just built so well, the incline, everything, and they're so fabulous to look at, so.
Oh, great. Well, I will tell those designers tomorrow, Tucker, and they're gonna be back. Which will be fun. Maybe there's a way I can share those photos too, once they're done with their photo shoot.
Great. Well, thank you, Abby. Amanda, thank you, Nancy, for, you know, making sure that October for Design happened in some form this year. And I think it's just setting us up for an even bigger and better event next year, a month-long event. And we can add some music to that and we're in good shape, so. Thank you. The last item that we were gonna talk about is Nancy just wanted to bring something to our attention. Many of you have probably already read about it. It's sort of a partnership in town. And Nancy just wanted a few minutes to talk to us and see if this is something that we would like to add our name to, so.
So, and Karen, feel free to chime in on this. So a number of organizations were working for several months over the summer to try and figure out how to bring kind of education around racial awareness to New Canaan. And so the Community Foundation, the Library, Grace Farms, Interfaith Council, and the Historical Society partnered to put together what's called the Start of Change Addressing Racism. And it's a six-part lecture series. The first three are very history-oriented. The first one that's already happened was slavery in New England. Tuesday night was someone that sort of covered a little too quickly, I think, but covered 1865 to the present. And next week is gonna be a professor from UVA talking about the Freedman's Bank and the sort of origins of economic inequality. And then we're moving into policy. There'll be somebody talking about mass incarceration, somebody talking about housing, and then Debbie Irving, who's the author of Waking Up White. So the idea was to kind of develop this common, common understanding so that if people want to move forward in a more, I don't know, Lauren Patterson likes to call it, what's gonna be the call to action? I think we're still formulating that, but we all felt really strongly that we needed to have kind of a baseline understanding. So what happened is when we developed the series, we then sent it out. The Community Foundation sort of spearheaded this way to see if other organizations wanted to partner. And the partnership means really you're a moral supporter. I mean, there's no, it's been funded by the organizers. So it really is that you, that you think that this is an important thing to have in the dialogue of the community. And the response has been overwhelming. There's a full list posted on the library landing page, but the Chamber of Commerce, the Board of Realtors, the Land Trust, New Canaan Cares, Country School, St. Luke's, Live Girl. I'm, Karen, chime in, I'm forgetting people, but a lot of people signed on. And so I said to Tucker, you know, is this something that TDAC would want to sign on to? I think as something that promotes the town, it is a wonderful way to engage people in a really important national conversation right now. But, you know, that's, I leave it up to the committee.
Anyone have any thoughts? Heather?
So this is just a little side note to what you're talking about. So I don't think I brought this up before, but with our sale of masks, I just thought it was too weird to make money off of selling masks. So I keep donating to different organizations. So the first one we did was Filling in the Blanks. I gave them a donation. Then I gave a donation to an organization down south called Higher Heights, which gets minority women in government and teaches them how to get in government, et cetera. And then what you're talking about, I'm now delivering bags of books to 40 schools. And within these bags of books, I mean, within these bags, the books are about anti-racism and inclusion. So I have five or six books for kids. And then there's a book called Cultivating Genius, which is directed more towards teachers so they can learn how to teach new curriculum, et cetera. So just sort of like going on a tangent, but sort of with what you're talking about.
No, that's fantastic. Wow, well done. Does anybody have any concerns or any issues if we were to lend our name as an organization? Again, we represent the town in one sense, and just didn't know if anybody else had any additional thoughts.
Well, I would just like to say I've been on the last two lectures. And I've learned an enormous amount. The speakers were very accessible and shared information that was entirely new to me about slavery in the Northeast. And I think it's just a great starting point for our broader understanding of why things are happening the way they are today with these demonstrations and understanding this, this never fully resolved conflict. So I personally am finding it so enlightening. And I would hope that a lot of people can watch it because I do think it exposes answers to a lot of confusion right now about why we are, where we are. And even in a small, safe suburban town like New Canaan, this is important for us to grapple with. And I know the Board of Education is taking it on. I know St. Luke's is taking it on. And I personally would love to see TDAC somehow make a gesture of being supportive of this initiative. Certainly, New Canaan as a thriving economic town. I would say that we all want to be inclusive and it's important for our economic vitality to be inclusive. So I think it is part of our agenda.
I agree. EJ?
I worked on a program with the Yale Divinity School just this last month about race and resilience. And it's in series, so there's gonna be a number. If they had their normal lunch and learn, they probably would have about 100 people there. They had over 350 people come to the Zoom event. So what you're doing, Nancy, is just so important because you can actually reach so many more people than you ever could imagine. So I applaud you for doing it.
Well, thanks. The library has done all the technology. And so actually, if you've missed any of them, you can go back and watch them through their website. They've all been recorded.
Thank you.
So I think what I'm hearing is that everybody's supportive of TDAC also being a partner, a moral support partner, if you will, of this effort with our, many of our other colleague organizations in town. Unless somebody doesn't, I'm gonna say that we are good to go on that front, Nancy.
Does TDAC have a logo?
Ah, we don't. EJ, I think we need a logo. We're gonna work on that. We'll get something going, but in name at least, for sure.
Okay, that's great. Well, the library will add you to the landing page. I'll let Anthony know in the morning.
Thank you. Well, we've had a lot tonight. So I think that, I think we'll call it a night at this point in time. Our next meeting is October 22nd. If any of you, I'd like to talk a little bit more about the app and how we might utilize that in town. So be thinking about that over the next month.
Can I ask one question on that? Because I wanted to follow up about the pricing. Like if New Canaan decided to do the app, could each organization contribute and pay like?
Yes, that's how he said.
A thousand dollars to cover all of our museums or something like that, because we're 10 spots?
Yes, that's how he said, when I met with him, he said that's how many towns are doing it, exactly that. But he's very flexible in his pricing. I think you heard that from him too. He just wants to make it work for so many of these towns and cities. But yes, basically a hundred dollars a pin for the year. And you can change the content out as things change. So they've had great success with it over at the Land Trust. People were, I mean, I just sat there right in the field and had the whole thing going on my phone. And I heard the artist and all, so it was really well done.
But I'm also thinking for something like Carriage Barn and Historical Society, they have very small budgets. If we can, if it could be a town-wide thing, it would be a way for everybody to participate.
Right. I know, I was even thinking that maybe this is something that, you know, we could go for a grant for possibly. I don't know, but it's not, it's not a ton of money. So think that through, come up with some proposals and we can talk about it at the next meeting. All right, you guys have had enough? Everyone fallen asleep on me? It's a long day. A motion to adjourn, Karen, I heard that a second. Let's see, I'm gonna call somebody. Jack, Trefaro, all in favor? Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Have a good week, weekend.
Thanks, Tucker.
Bye.